Okay, we're on the air now. Welcome, everybody. This is the Board of County Commissioners of Picken County Work Session on Tuesday, January 28, 2020. And the first thing on our agenda this afternoon is a request for 10-month limited-term full-time employee for the clerk and recorder's office.
Good afternoon. I'm Janice Boss-Caudell, Picken County Clerk and Recorder, and I was just joking earlier that the only time I come to you is when I want somebody. So here I am. It's me again. So Clerk and Recorder's Office is requesting a 10-month limited-term full-time position. Anything over nine months will need, and it requires benefits, needs your approval. So let me walk through what we're budgeted for and why we determined to go this route, to ask you for permission. In the 2020 budget, we did budget in the motor vehicle department for a 20-hour-a-week personnel, staff member to join us. In November, I spoke with my managers, the motor vehicle, as well as the recording managers. We decided to start cross-training from staff and see how that works before we bring in another staff onboard. The other thing is, in the, also last summer, when we prepared the 2020 budget, we prepared to bring in a part-time, an employee, a temporary employee, to help us for eight weeks during the primary, presidential, the summer primary, Colorado primary, and then again 12 weeks for the presidential election next fall. So we would bring in somebody in and out. We sat down as managers and talked through, it would be more beneficial for an individual as well as our department.
Sorry.
Thank you. Should I start over?
Nope.
I can reverse it and start over.
It would be more beneficial and provide better continuity of business for our operations to bring in a full-time, limited-term employee because they would learn during both presidencials and be better prepared, especially with the complex laws we work with during the presidential, which each, each every four years or every other years, it becomes more hectic and more of a challenge. And then during that gap period, we could retain that individual and train them in the motor vehicle, and they would help us mostly during the summer, the spring and the summer, when those gaps are, especially when staff take vacations, and especially when we have our peak season in motor vehicle is during the summer, the spring and the summer, working into the fall. So that was the reasoning for our decision to move forward that way. So again, it would be better continuity of business, that individual will be more prepared to help us during the presidential election next fall, filling the gaps in motor vehicle, as well as another concern next fall, as we have the census around the corner. So we will have challenges, not only finding employees, but also judges as well, so I want to put that out there, hoping that all the judges that have helped us in the past will continue to help us during these elections. So asking not for money, asking for continuity of business and to retain somebody for 10 months and then pay them benefits. I feel it's the right thing to do, to bring somebody onboard as a Picken County employee. Hopefully, we can find somebody who has skills, knowledge, and ability, and wants to be within our organization, and looks for something else within our organization.
Okay. George, thanks, Janice. I think that's great. I'm a little confused, though, because I thought that this has already been budgeted in your 2020 budget. So this is just an FYI?
This is, because I'm bringing in FTE for 10 months, I need the board's approval. It is budgeted.
It has benefits attached.
It has benefits with it.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And it, and we have money for that. It would be the same cost if I brought in through a temporary agency, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. Thanks.
Penny?
I am supportive of this. I think it makes great sense for many reasons. And after, I think, the boards discuss this, I'm going to ask the chairman, since this is a work session, if we can allow Janice a little bit of time to do another reminder about the upcoming primary, a little public service announcement, if it's okay with you.
Let's do that as soon as we finish.
I said, that's what I said.
After the discussion of this.
I said, after we're done with this discussion, if you would allot her some time.
For sure. I think we have plenty of time. Do you have a question?
No, I'll just comment. Janice, of course, I'm supportive. I think you're gracefully downplaying the just magnitude of work facing your department this year. And, you know, we're here, I think, to support you through that. And of course, having someone who's trained throughout all of the elections will be a real asset when you have 98% turnout come November 3rd.
Let's hope so. And again, it is, the election law is extremely complex, and to have somebody onboard that is trained and prepared for us is a huge asset for us. So thank you.
Just want, you have enough time to get them trained, up to speed, and everything that they'll be helping you do?
Sure. We have an election in March, so that's their first round. We have another one in June. That's their second round, and then preparation will be for.
They'll be a veteran by the time we get to the national presidential election.
Let's hope so.
That's the plan.
Yeah, I support this.
Thank you.
So Janice, the way that you have basically two part-time, temporary positions that have been budgeted, so you're, are you considering this is rolling those two both into one person?
Thanks for.
Or are you still going to seek a second person to help out on the motor vehicles?
I have enough money with those two part-times to budget a full-time. So Connie's working with me is, when they, line items, when they work with elections, I'll pull it out of that budget, and when they work with motor vehicle, I'll pull it out of there. So we'll balance that. But I, but I do have the money budgeted, and it is enough to cover for that 10 months. So I'd better not be coming back for more money.
We're going to watch you coming through that door.
And it seems like it totally makes sense, given the employment market here, if you can get one good person for 10 months. I think it'd be a lot easier to get, fill that position than two part-time positions without benefits.
It's easier, it's strength in continuity of business. And again, I just think it's the right thing to do for Picken County, to fold somebody in the county, provide them benefits, and hopefully, they're an asset to the community and to us.
Okay. Yeah, I'm very supportive of it, too.
Last question on the available pool of people. Do you have candidates in mind? Is there enough of a, you ever got a choice locally? Will we need to?
We, we do have somebody in mind. Elizabeth's been working on it, and for the last couple of weeks, yeah, the last month. So because of the timing with meetings, et cetera, and getting the paperwork through, this is where we are today.
Just thinking about, every time we talk about hiring a new position, we're also looking at a housing hole that needs to be filled. So hopefully, hopefully that won't be too much of an impediment. You can get them up, get them in and going quickly.
Working through that. Thanks for bringing that up.
Okay. Now, now, do you want to give us an update on the March 3rd election stuff?
So it's a go. So what I want to announce to you is, for the first time since 20 years, we, meeting in Colorado, will have its first presidential primary since 20 years. Ballots will drop in the mail on February 10th. We will have one week of early voting, and March 3rd is the presidential primary. Again, unaffiliated, Democrats will receive their Democrat ballot, Republicans, the Republican, and unaffiliated will receive, if they haven't picked a preference, will receive two ballots in the mail, both Democrat and the Republican, and will return one.
And they both come at the same time?
If they both come in the same time and they're voted, neither one counts.
But I mean, if the ballots will come in the same envelope.
Correct.
So you don't get a pink one and then a blue one. You get both of them. You could pick one, discard the other.
Yep. You'll get a ballot packet with both ballots in it, if you're unaffiliated. Okay, I will be going out to, actually, I'm reaching out today. I will be going out before City of Aspen, Basalt, and Snowmass again to announce. And we'll be working with the media to put ads in the paper, educating the community.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll be back on the 12th, just to give you more information. So think of some questions.
So, so Janice, on the, on the Democratic ballot, there will be a whole slew of names on there.
Yeah.
And few, if any, of them are going to come campaigning to Colorado because they're, this is a new, like, super-election day for us, and brand-new this year. So it's going to be difficult, I think, for voters to try to make up their mind out of such a huge selection.
Super Tuesday, I think there's 17 candidates, and I think four of them are Republicans, and the remainder are Democrats. So I'll bring a sample ballot when I come next week.
And there are names on there that are people who are no longer running for president, do you think?
They have not processed that through the Secretary of State, so how we view it is, they are still running, okay, until they have followed through accordingly with the Colorado Secretary of State's office and filed a proper paperwork.
Okay.
All right.
So only to further confuse the voting.
Right. So there's, there's how we look at it in operations, and there's the information.
How the rest of the world looks at it.
The rest of the world. All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. See you on the 12th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
Appreciate your help.
Okay. Let's see, our person to interview, actually, we're ahead of schedule right now, so let's jump ahead to review of future agendas.
Couple of items here. Just again, a reminder of the board retreat tomorrow at the Door Hoser. We're in the Kaufman Room, and I believe now, if you haven't seen them, the notebooks are on your desks, and.
We want them thoroughly read by tomorrow morning at 8:00.
Thoroughly, yes. The report will start after you give your legacy reports, so. And then Charlotte's got in here, and she's working on scheduling the Clear Corps presentation with Mona and Alice. So she's still working on that for you. And then also on, with Garfield County, on scheduling a joint meeting, looking at the end of February or beginning of March. Okay, so those are the notes I have on the agenda.
And I don't have anything. I went through it, and the issues that I had from last week, I've been taken off, cleaned up on the future agendas, so as of right now. And I'll talk with Charlotte about trying to go to that Garfield County, because I'm going to be out for that period of time, not quite at the very end of the month.
Okay.
But pretty close.
Okay, that'd be good. Yeah, just let her know.
Yeah.
And I would just note, I think I had brought up here and got the board's support to request sometime in the future, a work session to discuss water issues, and our update to the basin implementation plan, and the Ringford Water Shed Management Plan, and the Crystal River Restoration Plan. So I just want to keep that moving forward.
We will circle back on that for you.
I've been talking to April Long about coming in, presenting on the Rooppa side of it, and Ringford Plan, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll do that.
That would be, that would be great if we, you know, we could have a report on the Rudy water and power authority situation at the same, same time.
That's April.
No, April could probably cover, like, most of those things all on her own.
Right.
But she may want some support.
She may bring the hydro power guys along.
Okay. I don't have anything. George, you have anything? Okay, I guess we could go to the ambulance building closeout, contract closeout.
Change hats, change seats.
Change hats, seats, that's right. Okay, let's see here. We'll pull this up. Okay, Commissioners Rich Engelhardt, Deputy County Manager. I believe the last time I sat in front of you, we were just finishing out, kind of closing things, and letting you know that we had a ribbon-cutting coming up. So since that time, it takes a while for us to do our lien waivers, to then finish out our financial side of it. And so I'm here today to report to you what those final numbers look like, and bring you some good news. But first off, just to picture this nice, warm-looking picture.
It's beautiful.
Yeah. Pat's on vacation, or else I would have one of the ribbon-cutting, but I can't find him. So I apologize for that. I should have gotten that before she had left. But just going through this and the key dates, as you recall, when I would sit in front of the board and we would talk about milestones, we had a list of dates that, that were, that we were kind of knocking off as we went. So I'm just bringing these back, just to show you that we really did hit each of these. There may have been a couple that we were delayed maybe a week or so on, like the mechanical startup, and I think the future, or the furniture installation, we didn't quite hit those on time. But building occupancy, we did a soft opening, the staff moved in on time, and then we did the ribbon-cutting on 9/9 of 2019. So here's what I wanted to show you. The construction costs, so what you've got on the left side are just the particular items, and then the expenditures associated with those. So at the top is the overall construction, minus any of these soft costs, furniture, or the owner contingency. So this construction also included some of the work that we had to do on the utilities for Holy Cross, so that's rolled into that as well. So construction costs were about $7.27 million. And in soft costs, the total of those four that are underneath that was $945,000. And so we had the architectural fees that came in at $458,000, the fees and permitting, which was work with the city, and the utility providers that we had to get the permitting from, was $392,000. Engineering consulting, about $73,000, then 19 for miscellaneous. So that made up $945,000. I ran the percentage costs on construction for those, and they are actually right in line with what you would anticipate paying for architectural fees and permitting. So but whenever, when we talk projects, when people talk just simply construction, you've always got to keep in mind, there are those soft costs, and they're substantial in projects like these. So I break those out separately, so that you can see those. The furniture fixtures and equipment came in at $154,000, which is really a good price. That included the weight equipment that was part of the workout room itself, and some of the IT costs associated with that meeting room that they have there. And then I showed the owner contingency off the side. Whenever we make decisions as we're going along, those funds are rolled into what the construction is, because FCI will come in, or the contractor will come in with a change order, and either they'll have that in their contingency, or the county would have some contingency funds available. So we've set aside $370,000. And you see the $10,000 off to the side there. I'm pulling that out of these numbers because there are still, we're going to put a surface on the outside steps that lead up to that Nordic Trail. We were working with the city on trying to get the graded type of steps that you see normally, like SkiCo uses a lot of those. The type of openings just didn't meet code. So we ended up having to go with a different type. So now we're putting a surface, kind of a non-slick surface on those, because this fall, whenever it rained a little bit, those were awful slick. So we're going to go ahead and put a kind of a graded surface on top of it, and that meets code. So that's yet to be done. I wanted to close this out, and then we'll just do it on time and material. So that $10,000 is set aside. And so the bottom line is that we had total revenues of $8.6 million. The project came in at $8.3, and we were able to turn back. We're going to, Connie and I decided we'll just round it to $215,000.
Back into the fund. That's great.
Yeah, that's going to go back into the fund balance here. So that's really good news. I appreciate. In fact, Gabe Muthing, I asked if he could attend today. He's out of town at a conference. But the team we put together, and with Gabe's help, we were able to really kind of keep the project within, within the boundaries that we had set, or that you had all had set for us, to bring this in under budget. And so it's always nice to come back and show you those, those overall savings. And then I highlighted at the bottom there, some of the revenue sources. We did tap into that $370 to do the solar addition on the roof. As you recall, we came in mid-year and said, okay, we're out of the ground, things are looking good. Why don't we go ahead and try that? And you, as a board, said, yes, we'd like to move forward on that. So we utilized that owner contingency to do that work. But in essence, it was, it was only maybe a $13,000 expense, because the cost of solar was about $53,000. But thanks to George, again, and your work with Core, asking us to go after those dollars, Holy Cross and Black Hills with those rebates, we installed that at a very reasonable price.
That's great.
So.
How's that performing? Have you been?
It was doing great until the heavy snows. And we, you know, we had a discussion the other day whether we get up and clean those off yet, and I've asked them not to do that yet. It's just pretty dangerous up there. So but I can tell you, whenever it was operating, we were doing really well.
Right.
It was, it was covering the costs. In fact, we were generating.
I had the same dilemma with mine on my roof, and I actually bought a rake to try and, and I decided that rake could actually damage them. So I decided to be very careful with that, you know. Don't want to take a chance I'm going to damage the solar panels.
Yeah. Yeah. I like the idea that you had at one time of maybe something on the side that you could put heat.
Right. I still want to do that.
Somehow, you know, and figure that out. So that'd be nice.
A hot air.
Defeats the purpose of, yeah.
You're right. Yeah, yeah.
There are times on my roof, or along the driveway, or anywhere, where we want to melt snow quickly. And on the ranch, I would get this powdered manure that was like really old manure, that was like really fine dust. And I would just spread that on the snow, and it, it just makes it melt really quickly.
The heat drives heat.
I think the city of Aspen would love that, to spread manure over the city.
I mean, that could, that could actually become kind of, you know, somebody's enterprise to develop some technique, so you don't have to get up there. You can do it from the ground and, and have something that would like spread some dust on solar collectors or on a north-facing roof to make it melt faster and remove the ice dams or.
Yeah, we're not unique. Yeah, we're not unique in this. I mean, a lot of solar panels do get covered up. And it's, and as you all know, it's a relatively flat roof. It doesn't have that pitch that it's going to go off there quick, so.
Maybe Matt could consult us on a, on a solar panel heating system.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Getting up on a roof in the winter.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, not what you like to do. So anyways, that concludes that. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, let you know that we've now wrapped it up.
Yay. I went out and visited and took cookies the other day for the, for the, for the staff members that couldn't attend the ribbon-cutting because they were heading, two ambulances full, heading to Denver that day. So I took out cookies to those staff members that didn't get there for the party. I don't know who ate them. I'm not sure they, the right people got them. I think they were probably eaten before that shift came on.
Probably, yes.
So Rich, a finance question that goes back to the, to the fund balance of our Picken County General Fund Balance?
No, that'll actually go the ambulance, the ambulance district.
Ambulance fund balance.
Which you all sat on the board for.
Yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to see who's fund balance. And I, I couldn't remember quite how we did all the financing of it.
Right. Yeah, no, it's a good question. Again, the bond proceeds came through a vote through the ambulance district, so that's where those revenues were generated. So. Okay. Unless you have any other questions, I'll step back.
Let's work on that, that snowmelt system. I still want to do that.
That on your list.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'll be your next task.
Nice job.
Success. Okay, next up, and we have our, our citizen interview. And so Matt Schmigelski is here for a Healthy Rivers and Streams Board interview.
And how did you know how to pronounce his name?
Yeah, that was impressive.
I am impressed.
Schmigelski. Well, hello. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Thanks for having me.
Oh, afternoon. It is afternoon.
Our afternoon, yeah. Glad, I guess I'm on time.
Yeah, you're good.
Right on time. We were a little ahead.
So Matt, we really appreciate any time a citizen applies to be on one of our boards. We really rely a lot on the advice we get from all the various boards. So we consider them to be important positions, and we appreciate the fact that you have applied, applied for this position.
Well, thanks.
So could you tell us some, something about your background and why you think you're qualified to be on the Healthy Rivers and Streams Board?
Yeah, so I've lived in the valley for about 18 years or so, and been involved in kind of the water scene for a lot of those years, working with special district consulting initially. And so we're running water systems out at Buttermilk and Highlands and different ones. So kind of got introduced to, to the water world from the municipal side, distribution side, and then, and then a little bit of water resource, sort of water rights and those sorts of things as well. And then have been in the consulting sustainability space for a number of years through my work at Clear. And then I'm a homeowner up at the Crystals. So the Crystals, we, and I think when I applied online, I put a little note in there, but we, we have a small subdivision of about 10 homes. And so our well went dry last spring of '18, so really, really dry year. So there was, you know, definitely made, became very apparent to us that there's, I think the climate impacts that we're going to be experiencing going forward, and today even, I think the results of '18 in a big way. There's, you know, water scarcity is going to become an issue. So that kind of, I think, is the biggest reason that I, you know, would, would like to, to learn a lot more through the Healthy Rivers and Streams Board, and listen, and, you know, understand a lot more about what's happening at the county level in the water space. And, and yeah, work at Clear, hasn't been a lot of water, but some dabbling in municipal water systems and those sorts of things. So that's kind of my background, and.
Just out of curiosity, how do you still have a problem with your well? Did you, were you supplemented in some fashion?
Yeah, we had to drill a whole new well, yeah. So it, it had been, it was originally drilled in 1970, or adjudicated in 1976, and had really had no problems in those 50 years. And so, yeah, it essentially went dry. The, you guys remember '18, when there was literally zero snowfall, and then it, in April, it became, went to 70 degrees. And so there was really no moisture to recharge anything. And so, yeah, we, I think, my partner got the last shower that one morning, and the well went dry. So we had to literally, yeah, figure out in really short order what our options were. So we had to go, you know, through the process of going to the, to the water commissioner and just go through the permitting.
Get a new well.
Fast track, exactly, to replace that one, and then had to drill one. So we were without water for about a week or 10 days. So it became pretty.
Pretty dry out there.
Pretty apparent, too, how much we rely on, on water. I mean, on a daily basis, just having to essentially haul water just to live day-to-day is, is pretty, pretty dramatic if you don't ever experience that. Yeah, and then now there's a, we were at a priority call, at a priority diversion call that is in place on, on the Crystal, or was during that, in the August timeframe, 30-day period, I think, in late August of '18. And so, so there's a group in the Crystal that you guys maybe are familiar with, that is trying to figure out how to address that at this point, you know. And really, there's no go-to solution. I think there's some discussions with, I think it's the West Divide Conservancy District, I think, is who's, who has that jurisdiction. And, and so trying to figure out augmentation water, which there doesn't really, much, much doesn't exist in the Crystal at this point. So how to, how to address that, that at a priority diversion call. So, so we've been involved in a bit of that discussion with the Town of Marble and some others that have been meeting over the past six months.
Tap onto that real quick, just a quick question. Thanks for applying. So as you know, years ago, we entered a settlement with the West Divide and, and the River District in terms of distinguishing the, the conditional rights for a dam up Placita, as well as the Osgood Dam. So given, given sort of the climate crisis, and some of the issues in terms of the calls for, along the Crystal, what are your thoughts about a dam? And if so, where would you like to see it?
Oh, oh, gosh, no. No, I don't think, I mean, the Crystal in and of itself is, is, you know, I mean, if you're familiar with the topography up there, it's, and, and I think the soil types and all those sorts of things lend itself to being really, really challenging. But by, by no means, I think we're talking about really, you know, in very small amounts of water. Like our, 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 our well produces somewhere in the order of a half acre foot, probably a quarter of an acre foot, maybe. So probably the amount of water that Jessup diverts in five minutes or 30 seconds even during peak season. So I just think, I think more than anything, it needs to be discussion around how to, you know, look with the perspective of the amount of water that we're talking about. And, and obviously, it's, it's all about time and place, where it's, where it's diverted to make up that, that, that. And, um, and obviously it's, it's all about time and place, um, where it's, where it's diverted to make up that, that, uh, that deficit. The, the diversion call that's, that's been made is, is fairly low down. It's, um, I forget the name of that, the ditch, but it's just out of Carbondale. It's that first meadow across from Bill Fells', um, property. So it's, yeah, somewhere in that mid, mid-reach of, of the Crystal that there needs to be some water made up to, to make his, his water right whole. Uh, I don't, by any means think that, um, that, and I, I don't have any foregone conclusions at all. I've, I've just really been participating from a homeowner's perspective to, to understand what, what's there. And, and really more than anything has been to, to, um, to share that, you know, our, the amount of water that we consume is, is really, really minimal. So it's kind of interesting in the water right spectrum that there's, it, that doesn't seem to be, um, front and center, you know, in terms of how to address it. It's really kind of a blanket approach to, to address the, the deficit. And it's like, maybe there's a different solution. So I think that would be my perspective is like, how do we maybe get a little creative? There's a lot of leasing that's going on. I think the Town of Carbondale would have been under that, um, that call as well with Nettle Creek. They were out of priority, but they were able to, to negotiate, um, in really short order, within thirty or sixty days, I think, a, an agreement with, um, uh, one of the ditch rights holders to make up their, their sort of exchange essentially. So, um, we just, as a disparate group of homeowners with very lit, you know, varying degrees of understanding, water rights are incredibly complex in and of themselves. So most folks don't, you know, it's hard to step into that space and, and be able to, to understand it in short order. So I think, um, if we, if there was enough understanding to, or agreement in place to be able to, to operate with that similar, um, similar sort of structure, I think that would be the, the best approach, in my opinion, just to be able to, to use existing partnerships and, and water that's already there that.
And not looking at a dam or reservoir.
Right, it'd be an exchange essentially, so.
Okay.
Do you think that because of your efforts here, that that might create any future conflicts of interest with efforts of the Healthy Rivers and Streams Board? We're very careful with that, with appointments, so.
Great. Um, yeah, no, that's a, it's a good question. You know, I think, um, you know, if there was obviously a, a grant that was being requested for that specific project, I would recuse myself from that.
We would probably ask you to.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, uh, but beyond that, you know, I'm, I, obviously there's my background and, and some municipal work, but like, um, I'm definitely open to, you know, really learning about what's, what's, uh, what's happening in a lot of the recreation activities and Basalt with, um, recreational in-stream diversion opportunities. And just find, trying to, you know, see and, and apply some of this perspective of, of climate to, you know, where opportunities might exist to, to, um, to, to, to look at ways to, to try and get ahead of the curve. Because I think we're, you know, that was, for me, eye-opening to see it really from a personal level to see.
Your backyard.
Yeah, literally to my house to, to not have water. So, um, so I'd, you know, more than anything would be, you know, just, uh, that perspective, I think, would be where I'd be coming from and, um, and being open to, to learning about, um, all the activities that are going on there.
Thank you.
Thanks for applying.
Yeah.
Kelly?
Hi, nice to meet you. Thanks for coming all the way up here today. What are your, what are your thoughts? And I'm sure you've been part of the conversation about the movement for Wild and Scenic Designation on the Crystal.
Yeah, um, I am fairly new to the Crystal. Yeah, I think about my property maybe four years ago or so. So I ha, I looked through some of the, some of the work that's been done over the years, um, through different organizations in the Crystal. And honestly, I don't know all the, the nitty-gritty and the finite details of, of those. I love the Crystal, of course. I'm a, I'm a boater as well, so, you know, recreation, recreational user of, of our, our local rivers. So definitely it's, I guess, another big aspect of, you know, what I would want to, um, understand better and be able to advocate for.
And then I just have a couple of general questions. Um, do you have a grant review experience in either professional or personal life?
Um, yeah, so a lot of the work that I did at Clear was around, is grant-driven. So primarily through, um, through a state contract, uh, State Energy Office. So developing writing went successfully, being awarded that grant, um, a few times and, um, a handful others. We, I primarily worked on electric vehicle, uh, opportunities, um.
So you'd be on the other side of it where you'd be reviewing.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so it'd be.
Scoring proposals.
Yeah, yeah, so I definitely have been on the, on the application side more than. And I have worked in HOA management and, and those sorts of things. So I definitely have interacted special district management. So I would be the, you know, essentially the special, special district manager to set budgets and mill levies for like Holland Hills was, was one that I was actively managing back in a, a previous.
So that's when you were working at Beach Resources?
Yes, exactly, yep.
Or dealing with that stuff?
Yep.
Okay.
And I've, I've stepped away from Clear and, and I'm starting my own, um, sort of sustainability and, and carbon reduction consulting firm. So, um, that's part of having the, uh, the, the freedom and, and opportunity to, to be able to devote some time to, to, um, this sort of activity.
So Kelly, you said you had a couple of questions. Do you have any, any other?
Um, no, I think that's.
Okay, great.
I was just thinking, uh, I don't know how much you've followed the Healthy Rivers and various activities. Certainly there's the Basalt White Water Park's been in the papers.
Yep.
And that, that project is going. There are other projects up the Crystal, of course. At one point, we're all discussing the turbidity of the water coming out of Coal Basin, you know, how would we try to mitigate that? If we could reduce that, I think that's the single point source of pollution in the Crystal. That's the single largest, I believe. And at one point, we talked about trying to actually create settling ponds or something. There's a lot of interesting stuff going on, both in your neighborhood and elsewhere. I, I guess you'd be filling, it's a District Five seat, right? Or is that the, the Roaring Fork Watershed?
There's two seats, um, there are two openings.
Right, yeah. Ken Newbecker's seat.
He's, he's in Ken Newbecker's, not in, um, Kate Hudson, who's reapplying.
Right, right. And I guess that's a, doesn't, it's a watershed-wide if we put you in that. Looking at the vacant positions. I think your, your background seems to probably be some good crossover from what you've been doing. Any other, any other parallels you could, you could think about?
Hit on, um, yeah, no, I think, you know, it's, uh, interesting times, I think I would have hit on, you know, in terms of just generally where, where activity's at. You know, the Coal Basin, um, is an interesting project or, or area just with, you know, change in ownership. I think over the last number of years, I think there, there has been, um, some, the, some connection there with, with, uh, the group that is involved, um, with that ownership. So there might be, you know, and some time or, or a new path forward or, or a new discussion to maybe evaluate those sorts of things. So I've found that in, in my work, you know, that a lot of times stuff will hit roadblocks and it, you know, over time, you know, new perspective, new ownership, new things can, can change that dynamic in a big way. So maybe there's, you know, opportunity to, to look at some of these projects that maybe you had.
Regarding, regarding being on a board, I'm, I'm assuming, I have to go back and look, but you, just the, the board dynamics. Often like our board is, you know, five individuals who can make a decision only if we're all working together in a public forum.
Yeah.
You know, so you get that sort of dynamic. And are you familiar with, with how that works? Just, you know, the biggest concern we all have is avoiding ex parte communication or, or any things that would, you know, that wouldn't be, violate a sunshine law or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've, Garfield Clean Energy is a group that, uh, that Clear managed. So it's, it's definitely, you know, active and, um, and mainly, um, you know, just sharing updates on, on my work in, in the transportation space and those sorts of things. So, um, interacting with, with, uh, you know, commissioners, there's Garfield County Commissioners that were part of that, um, group as well as, you know, all the participating entities. So, um, definitely have been on the, the, the front side. I haven't necessarily had as much, much exposure on the backside, but that's where I really would like to, to, yeah, step into that role and start to, and learn about, um, and, and be active in, in that process. And, uh, and then more than anything, you know, learn a lot about what's, uh, what's happening countywide and get that perspective as well.
Great, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Kelly?
Yeah, so, you know, you don't have to live in Colorado long to know that, um, water is a sensitive topic. And, you know, I think with, you know, the Healthy Rivers Board is, um, you know, the board and the fund are created through voter support. And, um, you know, our policies at, at a county level, um, sometimes can conflict with the River District and, you know, conservancies and, um, you know, West Divide and like George kind of alluded to. So I guess I just want to check in about your ability when you have your Healthy Rivers hat on, you know, to be reflective of the Picking County, um, view and, and that community's interest when you're, you know, active on the board.
Right, right. No, that's a, that's a good point, of course, yeah, I would, um, yeah, be, you know, open to, or, you know, have that perspective to, to, uh, to, to take from that seat and that table. And, yeah, I haven't necessarily been the, I think the most, uh, active I've been with regards to, um, you know, understanding West Divide as, as an entity, I haven't really, uh, had much, much exposure to them beyond this, the Crystal, uh, the issue that we've, are facing as a, in our home and our subdivision, so. So, yeah, no, I mean, it's.
And you have great resources. I will just say that, that's not necessarily left to the Healthy Rivers Board on an individual level to feel out. You know, I mean, they work very closely with our attorney's office and reflect this board's position on water policy and things like that. So you're not floundering out there. But I do just want to sort of call that sensitivity to your attention.
In over your head.
Yeah.
Yeah. That proposed, uh, water, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Play that, does that answer your?
Okay, Patty?
Yeah.
And time-wise, obviously, you've realized that in your own personal life, you'll have time. Um, meetings are once a month, once a month. And right now, we have, the application process is closing the twenty-seventh, which was yesterday, right? I think we extended it a week. And, um, so we still have one more person to interview. So then it takes us a little bit of time and we do our appointments by formal resolution during one of our regular meetings. So I guess it's, so don't be, you just, it might take us a little bit, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, it'd be at least a couple of weeks before we have, you know, make a decision of either, actually, there's three people applying for two positions in effect, one of them being an incumbent.
Okay.
And then you could, most, most likely you would be filling the, um, Roaring Fork Watershed, which could be anybody from Eagle or.
Well, no, he could be the District Five.
Or you could be filling a District Five position, which is the, the Down Valley area, which would be the same as George's Commissioner District.
Okay.
So that's because you're living in the Crystal River. So, um, we'll let you know. Thank you for applying.
Thanks, thank you.
Appreciate your time, yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Appreciate you stepping up, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, we appreciate it.
It's a great board, good group of people.
Yeah, I know, I guess you had been on it, so, yeah, it'd be interesting to, to hear your perspective on.
Sure.
Activity, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we are moving along here today, board. I'm impressed. Kelly's going to get to that FaceTiming of that wedding with her daughter's little star girl.
Okay, um. We have done everything but board open discussion. Rich, do you have anything?
I do. I've got actually some pictures I can show you of the airport, just a quick update there. For that, I, I believe Carrie sent out an email to you all about accessing to be able to get, uh, time sheets.
And I think it confused a lot of people. Um, I'm coming to you. I refer to everybody to you.
I know, I know. And you can say I went right to Carrie. So, um, what we can do is with our new system, I don't think we've had the opportunity to sit down and run you through that. Maybe that we should take a little time and either do it individually or whatever and show you the new, um, access. And you can go in and access your time, uh, car, your paychecks on there and just take a look at those. Because you don't get those now printed, so, um, if you'd like, let me know and we can kind of run you through that. It's pretty slick. Okay, alright.
Great, thanks.
That's all I had, other than some photos. You want me to?
Yeah, yeah, why don't you put those up first? I've got a couple of things to, for us to discuss.
George, by the way, that notebook, that's paper in there, that three-ring binder? I don't think you can pull it up online, can you?
No, but I do recycle this every year back to Charlotte.
I do too, I do too.
I'm surprised, uh, maybe, uh, it's just a new cover, right?
Those are all recycled three-ring binders.
All right, um, John had asked that I, um, show this with you. We had a meeting this morning and we were asking how the improvements were going and where things were at. So this is a little bit older photo. It's, if you've been out the airport, you could probably tell by now. But, uh, so this is, uh, the interior work that was done, uh, in the corned-off areas where the old gift shop used to be. So those are walls that went across there and you couldn't, you couldn't see back through there.
I'm like, where am I?
Yeah, isn't that interesting? Um, and it just really opens up, um, that whole area. And, uh, so now you can see Clear back into where the, the food is at. And, uh, so that's a, that's a shot of that. This is looking now towards where the administrative offices were. And before, that was a solid wall that went, went all the way across. We were going to take out that entire wall where the fire extinguishers at, but it was a load bearing and it had quite a few utilities within it. So we went ahead and just opened up a door that walked back into that. And then that's what it looks like now, so it provided a lot of additional seating back in there. The window in the far back corner, that's where John Kenny's office used to be. Uh, so you can, you can tell, it just, uh, it really, uh, opened up, uh, that whole section.
Is it at Max or because of fire code or can we put in another row of chairs if we needed to?
We could probably do another row of chairs in there. Um, as you can see, it's, you do have. Yeah, yeah, I mean, if we had to, we could, we could probably do a single set. I'm not sure we could do a double, um, in looking, uh, whenever you get back the other way and look across, I'm not sure down at that far end if we can make that work or not. But if we got into a jam, I think we could do something there, Patty.
At least some more.
Yeah, absolutely, so. Um, this is outside now where the loading or the, uh, for the baggage claim, or not baggage claim, but the baggage area after it screened. The one off to the far right side is the one that's already enclosed and under, is already utilized. And this is the addition. And again, the airlines are paying for this, uh, portion of this work. And, uh, we just bid and I think Mike Herman told us that the conveyor belt that's going to be used here came in, uh, under budget. So that was, that was good news, um, because this is quite a costly undertaking there. Up on the right, uh, top, I'm sorry, top left-hand corner is the pad that was poured, uh, for the structure that you see in the other photo. And this is that extra baggage area, uh, which is a tent. And this is standing inside now and looking out. So the tent's been put in place and, uh, it'll be ready to go now. So that any of these, these days, we had like yesterday, that it's, uh, kind of, you know, the weather has delays. So this is that overflow area for that baggage.
Is it going to be heated?
No, um, my understanding it's not, or it wasn't. Now, I might mention something about putting electrical, maybe those, um, oh, they're electric radiant heat is all. But, uh, the thought was that the bags are coming off the planes that are.
They've been cold anyway.
They've been cold, so it isn't as if we need to keep them warm. So I don't think there was a, you know.
If we, if we hear from the customers that there's an issue, then I think we can address it, but.
We could, and like I said.
Rather not use electric heaters out there.
Yeah, yeah, I know. And, uh, like I said, it, if it is, we can, we can certainly adjust for that. And again, these are kind of temporary improvements, but we've been, you know, trying to maintain the board's direction of, let's don't put a lot of investment out there, not knowing what, where the future's going to go. So we've tried to hold those back and then, speaking of which, this is the new administrative offices, um, so.
Half of it.
At least a half of it, yes. The other half is, uh, is onsite as well, but they're starting to put those into place. So this is where, um, we will be moving staff that's currently in the AOC back over into this, uh, building. And then, uh, we did have a one-year contract for the financial services that are taking place at the OAC, or I mean, at the, uh, North Forty. We've rented space over there, so they'll move back into this location.
Question is, did we purchase this modular?
Uh, yes.
So we can recycle it to Philip's Trailer Cart when we're done?
Yeah, who knows? Um, at least we own it, so we've got some options, for sure. Maybe it's, uh, employee housing someday for
You never know.
People, who knows? And then I just wanted to bring this to your attention too. Apparently, um, the airport has had some calls about, uh, being upset about being able to park ADA-wise closer to the building. And so this is something that they've come up with now that is a new sign that identifies that location to where you can, um, load and unload and it's AD, so, or ADA, so it's specified, so it's usually open now. But again, it makes it clear that it's a transfer zone. You, you still can't just
You can't park your car there if you're an employee.
And leave, exactly, yeah, yeah, yes, that as well. Um, so that, that's an improvement that has also just, uh, been recently made.
Thank you for that.
You are welcome. So that's, that's that.
We'll have to go out and look. Um, the other day I was at the airport just watching and there was a, a car sitting out there with nobody in it. And I, I need to go back and see if maybe they were in the ADA one and maybe the person had wheeled somebody in perhaps. But I'll have to go back out and see where, and right away, a, a woman came out and got in and drove away. But she did leave it, she did leave the car sitting there without anybody there. And I, I stood there, I was just curious, well, what's going to happen? How long would it take?
Yeah.
Um, airport staff to
Recognize that.
Come out and start, you know, preparing to tow the car away or whatever.
Well, you know, there's going to be instances like that. I, I would hope that, uh, that we recognize that. And if somebody's wheeling somebody in, uh, that they have the time to do that, but drop them and then come back out, so anyways.
George.
How's the, uh, the cell parking area working out?
From what I hear, it's working out well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has taken the pressure off the short-term parking and, uh,
That's a great idea.
So I think it's, yeah, it was, it was a nice improvement.
Yeah, great.
But you have to have a cellphone with you and you can't just leave your car there.
Yep.
So people need to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, moving the kiosk or the, uh, the building for the, um, uh, shared ride has really helped as well. I don't think we see as many people coming through on that shortcut, uh, as we used to have.
Right, I've noticed that, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, not utilized as a slip lane.
Yes, yeah.
And have, yeah, and have we seen any, well, you won't know this, Dave, um, about any increased traffic issues at the rodeo lot? No, not the rodeo lot, the Brush Creek Park and Ride. Never remembered that new name. For increased traffic coming out in the morning hours, it might be causing congestion at that signal using the new tiny house that they put in, George, at the Park and Ride.
That's a good use for a tiny house.
I know you say that.
Tiny space. Nobody sits down, nobody lies down.
You know, I, I think there was some issues.
Guess it's cold though, they haven't figured out the heat.
There were some issues early on, early on with the bus circulation. And I think they got that straightened out to where people weren't allowing for buses to come in, so they would just park and wait for the light. And so then the buses would back up. And so I think they've gotten that straightened out. But other than that, I
I'll ask Dave to look into it.
Dave would know, so.
Just wanted to ask about, about, I've used the, used the cellphone lot the other night, waiting to pick up my wife when she was coming back in from a trip. And, and, uh, it worked great.
Great.
It was, it's, uh, and what's nice is you actually have cell coverage out there, so when she called me when she got in.
It's a bonus.
Yeah, that helped. Um, uh, I, I had a call from one of the livery service guys yesterday. Um, and I think he was mostly concerned about the construction of the new baggage area and all that. And he said there were so many local vans and hotel vans trying to get in there that was really stuffed up. And he said, is there any way to think about in the future, just making that berm on the east side of that, that drive area a little bit smaller? Maybe to accommodate another lane of cars? Because he sounds like the number of hotel vans and shuttles and Ubers and people like that are increasing. And that, that space may need to expand. Uh, and there's a very, very forty-foot wide berm in there that might be trimmed down by a lane's worth of cars perhaps.
Yeah.
If, if that's a solution. But just thought I'd bring it up to put in, in the pipe for
Sure.
the next iteration.
Yeah.
But once the construction's gone, it may not be a problem.
It may not be. We can certainly monitor it. Um, you know, that's a nice thing, when we did the improvements to the parking lot, those were berms that we just removed and it really made a difference, so. Or we can go in and do that and maybe not compromise the, the noise. Right in there, you know, it's, it's really protecting that North Forty from a lot of the noise in there if we can still keep the berm.
Right, the big berms there.
There, just kind of backs on that, it'd be, that may be a solution.
And those rodents that live in those berms.
Yes.
Um, I have a question about the airport. And I have talked with many people and it was supposed to have happened, and I don't know if it has, to put an interior in the baggage pickup area, um, a Rafta sign that shows you when you can meet the Rafta bus at the airport. So that people don't either miss it and then go, I'll call somebody to pick me up, increasing traffic. Or so people don't go out and stand in the cold and, for half an hour if you've missed the connection. And it was supposed to have been put up. I think it's a great idea. It's passed on to me and I've talked to John Kenny about it. I talked with the ladies from Accra who are out there and they thought it was great. And I don't know what we need to do.
I can follow up on that, Patty, I know.
I think the board supports it, so.
With the bus, bus service signs in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, great idea.
Yeah, and I, I'd understood that there were conversations going on regarding that, so I can follow up.
You can follow up on that, because I think it'd be great.
It makes great sense, yeah.
If I could, if I could.
You go in any airport, anywhere, and if you are going to be catching a train or a bus or a taxi or a shuttle bus or anything, having really good signage and map showing how to get there. And then if we could have the added electronic thing, when, when the next bus going towards Aspen will be
Or going the other way.
All that, all that would be very helpful for visitors.
And I think you're going to see that in, in a lot of the recommendations that are going to be coming to you from the Visioning Committee. Um, in fact, I know on the task force I worked with on connectivity, one of the notions is to try to increase the multi-modal, multi-passenger type use instead of getting away from the single passenger. And an idea along those lines is something that shows that real time, how long it takes to get into Aspen with public buses, because they get to use the lane versus the distance or the time it takes to get in on a, on your own individual car. And, uh, would maybe encourage people to go, wow, you know, instead of waiting in traffic.
I think the main thing is just allowing people to catch it.
Yeah.
Because I've gone out there and frozen to, or I've rushed out there as it's passing. I would have stayed inside, or I would have hurried up knowing it was coming, you know? So I think that is really beneficial, because then it, rather than taking you an hour to get into Aspen riding the bus because you missed it, then it might be more efficient for people.
Yeah. I do know that they're doing a combination. I know that they're working on the signage, but I think there was something about even getting people the website on their phone so that they could look it up also. Because Rafta does a really nice job. You can look on your phone and know exactly where in there the buses are showing up.
I just think having it right in your face when you're coming over from the terminal.
Yeah.
I think, I think they should include the, the, how long it's going to take you to walk out of that bus stop too, because it's not a short distance.
Yeah, because if you go across the highway, it's a little longer.
Especially when it's slick, so.
Especially when you're hauling a lot of luggage and it's a hill.
Now, um, if I could, the other thing that I, uh, I've heard is in place, and I haven't gone out to check, but when you're at the airport, if you call up the, uh, the webpage there, the first thing you get now is the Good Traveler. I think that has been in, started up. I think the, the carbon offset,
Yes.
voluntary carbon offset program is, is up and running, but I haven't experienced that. Do you, have you seen it?
Yes, I know that, uh, Pat was working on that, um, with the airport staff and it's my understanding it's up.
Okay.
Uh, there's that opportunity now.
So any traveler goes on the website's going to get a page that tells them about that.
Yes.
And I just realized, I have to do mine both ways.
That's right.
I only did it one way, so now I'm going to do it coming back, because it's really easy to do. And I think we're working on the electronic sign, having some, um, nonprofit public space provided for us for the big electronic advertising signs to, um, do a flash message on there, which I think will really go, oh, I can go here and do that. So people will know what they're looking for. Good traveler means that you're nice to people and you offer them your seat rather. I think this would really explain it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
So do any, um, board members have, uh, other open discussion items?
I think we're good till tomorrow morning at eight o'clock.
I have, I have two of them that I want to bring up. One, we all received a letter from Deborah Russell from Redstone, and she was complaining about the mill levy that their
We have increased your property taxes?
Come, and she was comparing it to, to the one in Aspen. And Aspen was like thirty-five mil and Redstone was like ninety-seven mil or something. Um, I'm certain the differences becau- largely because of the Roaring Fork School District charges, um, maybe the
The new Rafta tax. I think what we should probably do, one of us or, is to refer her to the county assessor's office.
I was thinking maybe the, that's what I was thinking, maybe the assessor's office should be the one to contact her and just explain why their mill levy is what it is.
Right, well, and I also think she needs to realize, and somebody needs to help inform her, the county does not just raise your property taxes. It was done by a vote of the people. And so the issue is with how people in her taxation district, where she's taxed because of the special districts. What they did to increase the mill levy, it wasn't Picking County just increasing her from thirty-five percent to ninety-seven percent. It was based on the voters and that's just part of voter awareness. And if you have issues with those and you should go out and campaign against raising the Rafta tax or the school district tax or whatever. And I think it's just a misunderstanding and maybe that's something the assessor's office could pass on to just educate her. That, just reading the letter, it made it feel like she was accusing us of just raising her property taxes.
Yeah, yeah, it was very accused of.
We don't have the power to do that.
Yeah.
It's up to the voters.
I think the assessor was copied on that letter.
They were, they were.
Were they?
Yeah.
So maybe we just need to follow up and make sure they respond.
Give them direction to be the one, could you do that?
Steve, thank you for bringing that up. I didn't, I had that on my list and
Um, the other thing I just wanted for an FYI, um, there's been an issue with the Food Bank of the Rockies delivery to Aspen. Had to be canceled two different times because they were using the Forest Service parking lot and the truck couldn't get in there because of snow issues. Uh, so Nan Sandin is working on that. She was meeting today with the representatives from the Food Bank of the Rockies to talk about the, uh, you know, maybe coming up with a different location or a, some different system to, to get the food delivered to the people. And I had, I had a friend who actually volunteers, uh, and gets food herself from the food bank. And she invited me to go down and just watch their operation down by the Roaring Fork Apartments there next to the Stubbies Building. And so once a month, they are there in, um, in the parking lot, basically, at, by the Roaring Fork Apartments. And it was fascinating seeing all the people that came and the, how their whole operation. They get all these tables set out with all these boxes with food in it and it all gets distributed to people from quite a large area come to pick up food there. It was, uh, I was amazed at the operation. I had no idea that, that kind of thing was going on.
Is that the new location? Is that
Well, that's, that, that's their basalt location. And then they have a location at the Eagle County Building in Elgin. And they do each one like once a month. They'll be at the different locations just for a couple of hours and then the food's all distributed. And so there, the location in Aspen was a problem. And so I, I mean, I tossed out several ideas to Nan that, of places with bigger parking lots where they might be able to accommodate it besides at the Forest Service.
Well, the Forest Service is nice because it's hardly utilized, except maybe church on Sundays. But, um, they need to realize the snow will melt and then they won't have the profit. So rather than search for another place and expend all that energy and time, um, you know, I don't know how often it occurs that they can't get the truck in. And I was just stopped by there the other day and, um, pulled out because I needed to get on the phone and want to get off the highway. And, um, there is quite a bit of snow there right now, but it too shall melt.
Yeah, so anyhow, Nan, Nan's working on it. Um, I think sometime, maybe, maybe she can give us a report on during her quarterly report or something.
Okay.
Let us know what, what the outcome of their discussions are.
Okay.
So, any other, uh, open discussion? So we are adjourned for the day and we will see you for tomorrow morning. Breakfast starts at
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock and we're going to start meeting at
Patty, could you pick me up?
Eight-thirty?
Can I pick you up?
Yeah.
Is it eight-thirty or?
Oh, yeah. Go on, I'm not driving out yet, so, yeah, sure. Just call me in the morning, remind me.
Eight or eight-thirty, eight-thirty start, eight o'clock breakfast.
Because I don't have a car. My car's at DIA.
Okay, thank you, thank you grassroots, appreciate it, you being here.
I'll drop Elvish this off.
And, uh, you don't need to be.